Okay, looks like we are all here, 7 o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Before we begin, I want to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded and televised through Watertown Cable Access Television. The public can join by Zoom or by phone, and all of the information is on the town's website. If you click on the agenda, all the information is there, the Zoom link and the phone numbers. And also, public comment can be made through email, which is also on the website, to v Clerk, please call the roll. Unmute yourself, Marilyn.
Present.
Counselor Gannon?
Present.
Counselor Canelis?
Present.
Counselor Palomba?
Present.
Counselor Picciarelli?
Present.
Counselor Woodland?
Present.
Counselor Baze?
Present.
Counselor Donato?
Present.
President Sedaris?
Present. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you all. Okay, the first item, the next item on the agenda is public forum. Is there any member of the public who wishes to be heard? If you could please use the raise your hand function. And let me remind everyone, you are allowed to speak for two minutes, and we do not respond on the spot. I do see Rick Kalish. So if you could unmute yourself, please, and identify yourself and your address.
Good evening. My name is Richard Kalish, 270 Pleasant Street here in Watertown. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Watertown has made the commitment, as has the Commonwealth, to reach 100% renewable energy by 2050. But without certain actions at the state level, it will be extremely difficult, if not impossible, for our town to reach that goal. Buildings produce a significant proportion of the carbon emissions in the community, and we need the ability to adopt a net zero stretch code. Such a statewide code is also important for the development community to have uniform standards throughout the state. The two major climate change bills passed this session by the Senate in house are now to be reconciled by the Legislative Conference Committee. Climate organizations around the state are asking local officials to join them and urging the conference committee to include requirements for development of a net zero stretch code as an appendix to the Massachusetts State Building Code. Watertown faces climate change, and Watertown's Environment and Energy Efficiency Committee are asking the town council to sign a letter we have drafted to the Legislative Conference Committee, asking for three critical provisions to be included in the final environmental bill. One, the development of a net zero stretch code. Two, a more thorough public input process. And in the development of a net zero stretch code, hearings should be held in diverse locations, including low-income communities and communities of color, which have historically been excluded from the development of statewide building standards, although they have been burdened by high energy costs, negative health effects, and poor quality, or air quality. A requirement that, two, a requirement, sorry, a requirement that the Board of Building Regulations and Standards include four energy experts with relevant expertise in residential and commercial building energy efficiency and term limits for board members so that as building technology rapidly evolves, Massachusetts will continue to lead the way on energy efficiency. These provisions would allow Massachusetts municipalities to develop building standards that are part of the clean energy solution. Furthermore, net zero buildings have significant health and safety benefits, keep residents more comfortable, lower utility bills, and protect residents' safety in extreme weather events. Thank you for your time and ongoing support.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard in public forum? Seeing none, I close the public forum and move on to the next item on the agenda, which is President's Report. And I have a couple of quick items. First of all, to Mr. Kalish's request, I did get a letter after the agenda was printed that on October 19th, the Watertown Environment and Energy Efficiency Committee voted unanimously in support of Town Council recommending to the Commonwealth the establishment of a net zero stretch energy code as an appendix to the state building code. A letter is being written and reviewed by WEC3, and they are supporting this, and I will be putting this letter, I will forward the letter to the council for their consideration at the next meeting. And then I received another letter from the Watertown Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, who again is looking for some support, and I will just preface my remarks by saying that they found that the benefits of the DCR closing portion of Greeno Boulevard in April was very beneficial to pedestrians and bicycle community and so forth. So they're also looking for some support from the council. This is another letter that I will forward to the council for their consideration at our next meeting. And then one more item on the President's Report. I do want to state, and I neglected to get the numbers today, but on Sunday, I spent some time at the clerk's office observing and going over some of what's going, what their procedures have been. And so far, we've had a very, very successful early voting period. The last time I checked, there were over 10,000 early votes cast, and we have had pretty much no issues, no ballot boxes have gone on fire. The ballot box holds about 700, and it continues to be emptied at a very rapid pace a couple of times a day. So I want to commend the town clerk, the administration, and, you know, Mr. Driscoll and his staff for helping to put together a crew of people that are helping us through this, and I think we're on a very good path. So I want to take this opportunity to thank everyone for their efforts on early voting. Next item on the agenda is presentations of petitions, proclamations, and similar papers and matters. And this is a proclamation congratulating New Repertory Theater on their Watertown Historical Moving Play, The Charles Lennox Experience. And Counselor Picciarelli attended, and I'm going to ask him to read the proclamation, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. A proclamation congratulating New Repertory Theater on the occasion of their Watertown Historical Moving Play, The Charles Lennox Experience. Whereas New Repertory Theater resumed its 2020 season in this unprecedented time with the production of the first Watertown Historical Moving Play, The Charles Lennox Experience, in partnership with the Historical Society of Watertown and the Watertown Free Public Library. And whereas New Repertory Theater has produced theater that champions the development, production, and continued life of new plays for the American theater. In their production of The Charles Lennox Experience, New Repertory Theater has created an immersive theatrical experience, educating participants in the diverse history of Watertown. And whereas New Repertory Theater has since 2005, served annually some 40,000 community members through their mission of producing plays and musicals that speak powerfully to the vital ideas of our time and current history in Watertown. And whereas with the goal of producing theater of the highest quality and safety for its patrons and artistic community, New Repertory Theater has established itself as one of the premier theater companies in the Boston area. And whereas New Repertory Theater additionally invites audience members to join in on numerous virtual free or low-cost engagement initiatives, including In the Wings Artist Salon, Script Reading Book Club, and The Quarantine Creatives. And whereas New Repertory Theater strives to adapt, reconstruct, and provide accessibility to quality theater by reimagining theatrical conventions during this historic period. And whereas New Repertory Theater is a leading voice in the Boston area's anti-racist theater and Black Lives Matter movement. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city known as the town of Watertown extends its sincerest congratulations to the New Repertory Theater on the production of the Watertown Historical Moving Play, The Charles Lennox Experience, and honors their outstanding contributions to the town of Watertown. And Mr. President, this was presented and is dated October 26, and was presented last night at their gala.
Thank you, Counselor Picciarelli. Can I get a motion on the proclamation?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Gannon?
Yes.
Counselor Canelis?
Yes.
Counselor Palomba? Counselor Palomba?
I thought you heard, I'm sorry, yes.
Counselor Picciarelli?
Yes.
Counselor Woodland?
Yes.
Counselor Baze?
Yes.
Counselor Donato?
Yes.
Counselor Feltna?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you. The next item on the agenda is public hearings, and the only item we have this evening for a public hearing is a public hearing and vote on a proposed amendment to the fiscal year 2021 budget.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Honorable Town Council. As you recall, it brought forward a proposed amendment to the fiscal year 2021 budget two weeks ago tonight. That was a first reading. That was advertised for a public hearing tonight, and then consideration by Town Council. So the proposed budget amendment this evening increases both the revenue and expenditures each by $1,571,280. I want to walk through the five items. The first, there are two revenue items. The first item on the revenue side would be the new growth number has been updated from the adoption of the fiscal year 2021 budget back on Monday, June 29. That dollar amount increase to the fiscal year 21 budget is $180,668. The second item from a revenue standpoint of view is that the actual fiscal year 2021 cherry sheet estimated receipts and charges haven't been received to date. State aid numbers have been updated from the adoption of the fiscal year 2021 budget, less than offset related to the one-time utilization of an additional free cash totaling $1,250,000. That increase in the revenue for fiscal year 2021 and the state aid would be $1,390,612. Thus, on the revenue side, the increase would be $1,571,280. Proposing tonight, Mr. President, members of the council, expenditures are requesting appropriations to the following three areas. The first one would be an appropriation of $102,175 to move forward with the development of the Watertown Climate and Energy Master Plan as a result of not receiving an action grant from the Commonwealth Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness or MVP program. As you know, Mr. President, members of the council, the fiscal year 2021 budget goal 2G reads as follows, is move forward with funding to develop the Watertown Climate and Energy Master Plan. The second item on, kind of following up the Council President's remark under President's Report, looking for an appropriation of $10,000 to fund additional resources related to the November 3 state election. And then the third request for appropriation of the additional revenues would be an appropriation of $90,000 to fund the operation of the Commander's Mansion for the remainder of fiscal year 2021. There's correspondence from Mr. McGoon, who sat with Mr. Tracy. Clearly, COVID-19 pandemic has had a significant, dramatic impact on the abilities to hold public functions at the Commander's Mansion. Those three items on the expenditure side, Mr. President, members of the town council, totaled $202,175. The remaining monies from the revenue going up, the $1,571,280, would be $1,369,105. Given what I had indicated is the number one concern for the remainder of fiscal year 2021, as well as the development of fiscal year 2022, being the COVID pandemic and related budget issues, and respectively recommending the remaining monies, the $1,369,105, go to Town Council Reserve. So again, the proposed budget amendment would be, excuse me, an increase of $1,571,280. Therefore, the proposed budget amendment, subject to the public hearing tonight, the fiscal year 2021 revenues and expenditures would be $154,013,280. Mr. President, that's the presentation in advance to the public hearing.
Thank you. Since this is a public hearing, I now open it up for questions or comments from the Seeing none, I close the public hearing and ask for a motion to put this on the floor, please.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the budget amendment totaling $1,571,280.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Counselor Feltna?
Just two questions. I was curious, the election building rental, what building that was for? And then on the Commander's Mansion, can we get an idea of what they're doing for their petite events and how they're handling being able to function during the COVID on their website?
Mr. Manager.
Yeah, Mr. President, I'll take the first question, and then Mr. McGoon will speak to the second question regarding Commander's Mansion. With respect to Counsel Feltna's query about the election building rental, the $2,000, that's related to the election committee, Mr. Flynn and the Election Commission is put another precinct at the Atlantic Cultural Center. Thus, the increase originally, we, the budget was $2,000 or $1,000 for each election. It's actually $2,000. That's the proposed increase of the $2,000. So that's related to the one location, Atlantic Cultural Center. With respect to the Commander's Mansion, Mr. President, members of the council, I'd like to have Mr. McGoon speak further to that.
Mr. McGoon.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Manager. In response to the question in terms of how we're dealing with COVID, I'm not sure if you're asking about specific procedures or how we're hoping to increase rentals, but I'll try and address both. We have put procedures in place, so any event, we register people as they come in, so we can do contract tracing, provide them with a wristband after we record their information. So, you know, we keep track of all attendees and able to do contract tracing. We also are sizing events to stay in line with Health Department regulations and state regulations, including staff that would be supporting the event, as well as any caterers or those types of things. So events are sized appropriately according to regulations. I think the mansion's been very creative. The mansion staff, Tammy and Gina, have been very creative in trying to market themselves to events in this current state of, you know, the pandemic. They've done both events, trying to help educate people about how to have an event in these circumstances, as well as launching what they have termed petite events, where they're making the venue available for smaller-scale events. And we've gotten a number of those. Probably the bigger revenue portion is booking events further out with the hope that we'll get past this and be able to have larger events in the future.
Counselor, you're muted, Counselor. Unmute yourself, please, Counselor Feltna. There you go. Did you have something else?
Anyway, I just would say the Commander's Mansion is such a treasure, and I, you know, I wholly support this budget and appreciate everything they're doing to try to keep us alive in that facility.
Are there any other questions? Counselor Baze, and then Counselor Palomba. Counselor Baze?
Yes. Recently, I've been getting questions about a climate and energy master plan, and I was wondering if you had some details about where that money is going and what to expect in terms of developing a master plan.
I want to recognize Steve McGoon on this one, please.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. So what we had done, and the reason we hadn't started the climate and energy master plan yet was because we'd submitted a grant application to the state in order to fund this effort. And this $102,000 basically replaces that grant funding we'd hoped to get. So we do have an RFP altogether, or at least the makings of it in terms of the scope of work that we laid out with the consultant that had done our MVP plan. So I think we can hit the ground running fairly quickly in terms of getting this moving and starting in earnest our planning efforts for the climate and energy plan. There's several components of it. I'd be happy to get into details if you'd like, but, you know, in the interest of time, I'll leave it at that. But I do think this funding would be important and let us get started with that work.
Counselor Palomba?
Thank you. I'm going to be supporting this, obviously, because of the great allocations for the climate master plan, the elections, of course, and the Commander's Mansion. I just want to say that I respectfully disagree with the decision to place the rest of the funds into the Town Council Reserve. I recognize Mr. Driscoll's concern about the future versus, because of COVID, but I know there were a number of requests for funding that were both in our guidelines, as well as from departments, such as the request for a recycling coordinator from DPW and the request from us as a council for our communications and engagement director. And I think those requests could have been fulfilled. I also feel like, given the constant, and we saw this again just today, as Counselor Canelis shared with us information about what's happening on Elm Street, yet another project is being proposed for life sciences, which again will increase our real estate and property taxes. So I just really feel like we are in a situation where there's constant development in town and constantly opportunities for increasing revenue, and that we could have used the funds that were allocated by the state to make sure, to fund some of the projects that we had hoped for. So all that saying, I will be supporting this, but I did want to register my concern.
Thank you, Counselor Palomba. Are there any other questions, comments? Can I get a roll call, please?
Counselor Canelis?
Yes.
Counselor Palomba?
Yes.
Counselor Picciarelli?
Yes.
Counselor Woodland?
Yes.
Counselor Baze?
Yes.
Counselor Donato?
Yes.
Counselor Feltna?
Yes.
Counselor Gannon?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you. Next item is item seven, which is motions, orders, and resolutions. And 7A is a first reading on a proposed order allocating the property tax levy among or between property classes for fiscal year 2021. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Honorable Town Council. As the President just indicated, tonight's a first reading. Just want to provide a brief background for the folks watching at home. Tonight's first reading is on the proposed order allocating the property tax levy amongst or between classes for fiscal year 2021. Since fiscal year 2020, 2002, some 20 years ago, the Honorable Town Council has voted a shift of 175% from residential to commercial industrial personal property classes, which results in a lower tax rate for the residential class. Additionally, in fiscal year 20, the Honorable Town Council voted a 24% residential exemption. The residential exemption is a provision that allows a shift of the tax burden within the residential class by granting a discount to the owner-occupied properties. Two weeks from tonight, Mr. President, members of the council, on Tuesday, November 10, Mr. Earl L. Smith, the Chair of the Board of Assessors, will be making a presentation, a 16-page PowerPoint presentation related to the proposed order allocating the property tax of the tax classification hearing. That 16-page PowerPoint presentation, the Town Council clerk can put that on as a, linked it tonight, and it'll be on again, Mr. President, for the public hearing and consideration by council on Tuesday, November 10.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Next item on the agenda is 7B, which is a first reading on a proposed order setting optional tax exemptions for fiscal year 2021. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Again, this is a first reading. This is consistent with the agenda item just before then. There'll be an advertisement of public hearing two weeks from tonight, on November 10, where the council will be considering their longstanding practice of adopting exemption amounts, 100% maximum allowable increase above statutory levels. Again, we provided information on the cost of the increase above the statutory levels. These monies will be paid from the overlay. Again, there'll be a public hearing and consideration by Town Council two weeks from tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. The next item on the agenda is 7C, which is a resolution approving the acceptance of gift of tangible personal property of 100 non-medical masks for use by the Watertown poll workers and election officials generally at the state election on November 3rd from AIS through their nonprofit program, Sew the Masks, in partnership with the United Way of North Central Massachusetts. Mr. Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Again, we're very pleased to forward the correspondence from Mr. Flynn, indicating, as the President just outlined, that company AIS, an office furniture manufacturer based in Limminster, through their nonprofit program, Sew the Masks, have donated 100 non-medical masks for use by the Watertown poll workers and election officials generally at the state election a week from today, on November 3. As indicated, Mr. Flynn's correspondence in partnership with the United Way of North Central Massachusetts, Sew the Masks, started in the spring to help fight COVID-19. Sew the Mask enlists AIS factory team workers and communities, so as to sew high-quality, washable, and reusable face masks for distribution to those in need. Mr. President, members of the council, pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53A and a half, municipalities are authorized to accept gifts of tangible personal property with the approval of the Town Council. I respectfully ask your favorable consideration of the resolution approving the acceptance of the gift of tangible personal property. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Can I get a motion on accepting the gift of 100 non-medical masks?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we accept the gift of masks for poll workers.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor Gannon?
Thank you, Mr. President. Question through you to the town manager, how many folks will actually be deployed working as town election officials on Tuesday?
President, to Counselor Gannon's question, I'll forward that tomorrow, but I don't have the number right off the top of my head right now.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the gift? Seeing none, can I get a roll call, please?
Counselor Palomba?
Yes.
Counselor Picciarelli?
Yes.
Counselor Woodland?
Yes.
Counselor Baze?
Yes.
Counselor Donato?
Yes.
Counselor Feltna?
Yes.
Counselor Gannon?
Yes.
Counselor Canelis?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you. Next item on the agenda is a resolution authorizing a transfer of $12,000 from the fiscal year 2021 Town Council Reserve account to the fiscal year 2021 Charter Review Assistance account. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the town council. As you are aware, the Honorable Town Council's Fiscal Year 2021 Budget Policy Guideline 2L reads as follows, identify funding to hire a consultant to assist with the town charter review. As a follow-up to discussions, the Honorable Town Council President Mac Sedaris had with the Collins Center attached, we forward a copy of a professional services agreement regarding the charter review assistance project. So given the fiscal year 2021 Budget Policy Guideline, respective request, the attached transfer of $12,000 from the fiscal year 21 Town Council Reserve transfer of $12,000 from the Fiscal Year 21 Town Council Reserve to the Fiscal Year 21 Charter Review Assistance Account be placed before you for your consideration. Mr. President.
Thank you. Can I get a motion on the transfer, please?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the transfer of $12,000 for the Charter Review Assistance.
Second.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Pichorelli?
Yes.
Counselor Woodland?
Yes.
Counselor Baze?
Yes.
Counselor Donato?
Yes.
Counselor Felton?
Yes.
Counselor Gannon?
Yes.
Counselor Canelus?
Yes.
Counselor Palomba?
Yes.
President Sideris?
Yes, thank you. Yeah. Okay. The next item on the agenda is committee reports. And eight A is a report, a Committee on Public Works report regarding the fiscal year 2021 local road construction program. Counselor Pichorelli is the Chair. Counselor Pichorelli?
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Public Works met September 24th. President, where myself is Chair, Counselor Donato, Vice Chair, Counselor Palomba, Secretary, variety of other councils, staff, and members of the public. The meeting was done on Zoom, and the purpose of the meeting was to review and make recommendations on the fiscal year 21 local road construction program. Matt Schuman led the discussion. The complete PowerPoint presentations attached to the minutes. Key points from the presentation include the following. Due to receiving bids that DPW felt were too high for selected roads in 2019, they reissued bids for the road repair projects by the Town Council in 2019 and those approved by the Town Council in 2020. 14 roads were included in the two bids, seven from December 2019 list and seven from the 2020 list. The bids went out December 2019 and were awarded to Onyx Construction. They had two crews working in Watertown since April of 2020. Seven streets, five from 2019 and two streets from 2020, are 90 to 95% completed with minor work remaining, such as line striping and preparing and seeding planting strips. The remaining seven streets are in various stages of full reconstruction. They include two streets from 2019, which are Bellevue and Nichols, and five streets from 2020, Kimball, Downey, Wheeler, Lane, Louis Street, and Frank Street. For a list of where each street is in the process, please refer to the attached presentation. It was noted that these roads will not be completed by the end of the construction season, which is November 2020, and will need to be completed during the April 2021 season. There's been significant progress in the town's Complete Streets, Green Streets project. 12 stormwater tree trenches have been installed in various streets. Steps have been taken to preserve, protect, and increase our tree canopy, enhance planting strips, and reduce impervious areas by extending curbs. All the work is done in meeting ADA compliance. The discussion of pavement management was extensive. The committee and those attending learned about methods to prolong the life of certain roads, about coordinating repairs with utility work, about incorporating a complete streets approach to improve pedestrian bicycle facilities, and about seeking alternative funding for large-scale projects. In addition, Mr. Schuman outlined the field survey of our roads that uses a pavement condition index that rates roads from zero to 100. The last index was prepared in 2016, but planned, but the planned 2020 index is behind schedule. Pavement management techniques used by DPW were presented. They consisted of an order of less than, of less intervention to most intervention, crack sealing, full depth patches, limited mill and overlay to complete road construction for reclamation. The final technique involves the installation of granite curbing, concrete sidewalks, driveway aprons, and handicap ramps. Mr. Schuman also discussed the unfortunate delays in the reconstruction of Waverly Avenue. The Town Council allocated an additional $1.5 million for the Long Street Collector Road Program in fiscal year 2019, and Waverly Avenue was selected for the program. While some preliminary work has been done, the project will need to be carried over into the fiscal year 21 construction season. Before presenting the central purpose of the meeting, the recommended 2021 road program, it was noted that this year, the consultant performing the pavement management metric will also conduct a survey of our sidewalks. Please note a second attachment lists the streets that receive pavement maintenance through short distances via the mill and overlay technique and sidewalk repairs. For the 2021 road reconstruction program, based on the pavement management inventories, windshield surveys, maintenance records, proposed and completed capital projects, and resident input, DPW prioritized the listed streets considered the state of, considering the state of disrepair, geographic equity, and project readiness. Thus, the streets recommended for reconstruction are as follows: Alden Road, Sheldon Road, Hazel Street from Quimby to Dexter, Gertrude Street, Goldie Street, Elmwood Avenue, and Grandview Avenue from Chapman to Copeland. Following Mr. Schuman's presentation, there were a number of questions from councilors and residents. Counselor Donato related concern from residents about narrowing the roads such that it was difficult for emergency vehicles to travel. It was noted that the streets that are a minimum, streets are to be a minimum of 24 feet, a 10-foot wide traveling lane and seven feet on each side for parking, and that all road constructions are reviewed by police and fire. It was also noted that the goal is to have sidewalks on both sides of the street, but this is not always possible, given the 24-foot minimum. Counselor Felton has a series of questions based on concerns raised by residents. She queried about the status of repairs on Dexter, Mount Auburn, and School Streets, which were financed by Athena Health, and how the planned improvements on Wallis Street by the new owners of the Dobell site might intersect with present and future work. She advocated that Chester Street, which has had water work completed in 2013 and gas repairs in 2015, beyond the list of reconstruction in future years. In addition, she suggested DPW look at Moore Street between Galen and Watertown Streets, as well as Highland, as possible candidates for Long Streets and Collector Program. She put forth the possibility that Irving Street is a candidate for the 300 to 500-foot section eligibility for mill and overlays. Counselor Felton, seconded by Counselor Palomba, were disappointed that the asphalt berm that was removed on Russell Street and resulted in the deterioration of the planting strip could not be repaired. Mr. Schuman replied that the patching asphalt berm was a townwide problem and not effective if done by hand. It would require a special machinery to replace the berm, and that was not considered a priority. DPW, however, does repair and receive deteriorating plant strips caused by missing berm and places no parking signs in areas where there's no berm to prevent cars from parking on the planting strip. Responding to Counselor Felton's questions about sidewalk repairs, Mr. Schuman said that there's been $800,000 of sidewalk repairs, and that, as mentioned earlier, there will be a sidewalk condition map created by the consultant creating the road audit that would rate sidewalks from good to fair to poor. This information will be used in determining what sidewalks to replace or repair in fiscal year 21. Counselor Felton expressed her appreciation for the DPW's installation of the 12 stormwater tree trenches. She asked DPW to attract new planting strips so information could be added to our overall area of available green space. Finally, she reported on a new product, Aqua Fault, that has been the potential of keeping potholes secure during and after winter, and she sent us some information with a website link. Andy Campagna, member of the Bicycle Pedestrian Committee, asked how Complete Streets is designated and why the Complete Streets Working Group has not met for quite some time. He was concerned that their input was not being considered when roads for reconstruction were being selected. Mr. Schuman explained that the committee would be consulted after the Town Council approved the roads. Mr. Campagna also wondered about bike lanes on the reconstructed Waverly Avenue and was told there are no plans for bike lanes. This was disappointing news to Maria Sayes. We said it's important to have bike lanes on north-south roads like Waverly that connect to large east-west roads. They're often travel routes for bicyclists. A further concern raised by Ms. Sayes and others is the need to seriously consider the state of sidewalks for pedestrians and cyclists, particularly when evaluating the right side of the roads where bikes travel, and particularly on larger roads and collectors. Laura Weiner, the Senior Transportation Planner, explained that the Bicycle Pedestrian Study is almost complete and includes recommendations on what sidewalks should be a priority by determining where people travel now and could travel if the sidewalks were safe, such as to the library, restaurants, and recreation areas. More attention will be needed to maintaining and repairing the sidewalks. The final comment was from Resident Hannah Rakoff, who pleaded for more curbing in town, a plea mentioned by others earlier, particularly in terms of the washout of planting strips. The meeting concluded with the following action item. The Council of Donato made a motion, seconded by Counselor Palomba, to recommend that the full Town Council approve proceeding with the 2020, 2021 road program as presented, and that motion passed on a roll call by three to zero. And I do want to thank Counselor Palomba for preparing these meeting report quite promptly for a very long, wide-ranging discussion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I also want to thank Counselor Palomba for a very comprehensive report that we couldn't get on our last council agenda, so I apologize for that. Can I get a motion to accept the report first?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor Felton?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just make a note that that obviously I attended the meeting. My name's not included under attendees, but I appreciate it was a very lively discussion, and Counselor Palomba included a lot of things that were mentioned. So I think the public will enjoy. It's not perfect, but I'll say I advocated for more, so that's necessarily Highland to have, which is not my district, as Counselor Woodland is aware. But I really appreciate that it was a long meeting and we had a lot of questions, so thank you.
Counselor Palomba?
I just want to appreciate Counselor Pichorelli not pointing, not taking a moment to point out that I listed the 2020 Road Recreation Program, not the Road Reconstruction Program. I don't think we have recreational roads. So I do appreciate his careful reading of that and jumping right over it. Thank you.
Mr. President, if I could just amend my motion to to say that the report is approved to be amended to show Counselor Felton's attendance.
And also changing the recreation.
And also make a minor typo change.
I'm sure Mr. Santola, who's with us tonight, would be very happy to make all the roads recreation.
That's for stickball on the streets.
Are there any other comments?
I'll second that, by the way.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Counselor Woodland?
Yes.
Counselor Baze?
Yes.
Counselor Donato?
Yes.
Counselor Felton?
Yes.
Counselor Gannon?
Yes.
Counselor Canelus?
Yes.
Counselor Palomba?
Yes.
Counselor Pichorelli?
Yes.
President Sideris?
Yes, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Committee on Public Works. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, I've got to go back. I need a motion that the Town Council approve the proceeding with the 2021 road program as presented.
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the program. Seeing none, can I get a roll call, please? Oh, Counselor Felton, hold on, Counselor Felton.
Well, I was just going to give a shout out to DPW. As many people know, I've been advocating for sidewalks for quite a while, so it was great to hear that a sidewalk plan and condition report will be forthcoming.
Are there any other comments? Can I get a roll call, please?
Counselor Baze?
Yes.
Counselor Donato?
Yes.
Counselor Felton?
Yes.
Counselor Gannon?
Yes.
Counselor Canelus?
Yes.
Counselor Palomba?
Yes.
Counselor Pichorelli?
Yes.
Counselor Woodland?
Yes.
President Sideris?
Yes, thank you. Now, the next item is the Committees on Public Works and Economic Development and Planning Report Regarding the Review of and Recommendations for the Implementation of the Parking Management Plan. Counselors Pichorelli and Woodland are the chairs. Who's, Counselor Woodland is going to read the report. Counselor Woodland.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committees convened on Tuesday, August 4, 2020, at 5:00 p.m. by Zoom in accordance to the Governor's Order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law 38, Section 20, related to 2020 COVID-19 emergency. President and myself, Economic Development and Planning Chair, Lisa Felton, Economic Development and Planning Vice Chair, Vitsa Pichorelli, Public Works Chair and Economic Development and Planning Secretary, Anthony Donato, Public Works Vice Chair, and Anthony Palomba, Public Works Secretary, Staff President, where Steve McGoon, Assistant Town Manager, Director of Community Development and Planning, Gideon Schreiber, Senior Planner, Laura Weiner, Senior Transportation Planner, and Lawrence Field, Senior Housing Planner, also President, where also President, where President Mark Sideris, and Counselors John Gannon and Angeline Canelus. The purpose of the meeting was to review the implementation plan for the parking management plan and make recommendations. The parking management plan is located at the link attached in the minutes here. Mr. McGoon provided a memo dated March 6, 2020, on the parking implementation plan, which is found in Attachment A to these minutes. The discussion took up the recommendations in order, of which there are 10. Number one, upgrade parking payment technology. Key discussion points included: The Town Council voted on July 14 to appropriate $132,500 for parking meter purchases. New solar-powered meters will be purchased in November from an MAPC-approved vendor, so there's no RFP going out. Meters will mount on existing poles, and there will be no kiosk or license plate meters. The meters will accept coins and credit cards. There is a credit card fee charged by the vendor of 25 cents per transaction, which is an industry standard that Watertown is no control over. We are still negotiating with two vendors for pay-by-phone, and it is likely there will be no additional cost to the town, but staff will advise, after negotiations are complete, there will be an additional fee of about 15 cents charged to the user. Note, Ms. Weiner subsequently clarified that payment by cellphone, there was no upfront cost to the town to install the pay-by-phone system. The parking enforcement tool currently used was provided by our collection agency and used as a license plate reader. We may need to switch to a different enforcement tool with some new meters. It is not known if the meters have a motion sensor to prevent feeding off meters. Staff will look into clarifying this. Note, Ms. Weiner subsequently clarified that to prevent feeding the meter, the handheld enforcement devices we use has electronic tracking, which works similar to chalking the tires. The enforcement officers can mark it in their system, and then when they come back, they can tell if the same car was still there. We could install motion sensors for an additional $300 a meter, but we have opted not to do that at this time. Counselor Woodland, myself, lost power, and I dropped from the meeting mid-discussion because of the storm. Counselor Donato made a motion, seconded by Counselor Pichorelli, to endorse the plan for this recommendation as presented by staff. That was unanimously voted four to zero. Issue number two, price and regulation, regulate, manage parking demand and create availability. Key discussion points included: Meter rated are defined in the traffic rules and orders, which are voted by the Traffic Commission, in order to use the full capability of smart meters and to set pricing dynamically in response to demand. The rates cannot be defined in the traffic rules and orders. Administration needs the ability to program them accordingly. In addition, there will be credit card fees and pay-by-phone fees, which are not currently defined in the traffic rules and orders. The Traffic Commission would have to agree with this. The proposal to remove time limits on street parking raised concerns about commuters or employees using them all day. A four-hour limit on street parking seemed prudent with no limits in the parking lots. Counselor Canelus expressed concern over changing the Wells Ave lot meters, ending time from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., as there are often evening services at the nearby churches that would be affected. Staff agreed programming could be changed if it created a problem, as this lot is currently underutilized. It was clarified that meters will not be in effect on Sundays and legal holidays as current practice. I rejoined the meeting by phone in discussion. Counselor Palomba made a motion, seconded by Counselor Felton, to endorse the plan for this recommendation as presented by staff, modified to four hours maximum for on-street parking with no maximum hours in lots, and also that Community Development and Planning asked the Traffic Commission to remove a setting of meter rates from the traffic rules and orders so that meter rates may be set dynamically by the administration in response to demand. This was voted unanimously five to zero. Third issue, consider reintroducing parking in key areas off-peak. Key discussion points: Ms. Weiner said this option was too risky to pursue at this time and that significantly more engineering study would be required. I made a motion, seconded by Counselor Donato, to endorse the recommendation as presented by staff, that this option not be pursued at this time and would be subject to further traffic studies in key areas. That was unanimously voted five to zero. Fourth issue, strongly identify municipal parking lots by branding and wayfinding. Key discussion points included: The naming of parking lots was discussed in a previous committee meeting as part of a wayfinding grant received by the town. Counselor Felton made a motion, seconded by Counselor Palomba, to endorse the recommendation as presented by staff. That was unanimously voted five to zero. The meeting adjourned at 7:54 p.m. following a unanimous roll call vote. The committees reconvened on Wednesday, September 30, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. by Zoom in accordance with in accordance with everything I mentioned previously. President and were myself, councillor Felton, councillor Pichorelli, councillor Donato, councillor Palumba, the members of the joint committees, staff president were, uh, Steve McGoon and Laura Wiener. Also present were, uh, council president Mark Sedaris and counselors Caroline Bays and Angeline Canelis, plus Andy Campagna, uh, from the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee and David Stokes from the School Committee. To start, Ms. Wiener gave an update on item two, parking meter rates as follows. Ms. Wiener went before the traffic commission earlier, earlier in the day for approval of the parking rates and time limit changes. The traffic committee approved the rate change and removed the time limits for meters. The traffic commission did not want to relinquish authority from setting the rates and they felt they could rapidly address changes to pricing as needed. Ms. Wiener neglected to ask about the four hour limit as voted by the committee, but Mr. McGoon said they had the flexibility to go back and change this as needed. It was later discovered that the September 30 traffic commission Zoom meeting was not properly posted and the votes taken at that meeting will have to be redone at a future posted Zoom meeting. Issue number five, invest in infrastructure upgrades to municipal parking lots. Key discussion points included. This item is combined with actions, uh, for item nine to reduce parking demand by enhancing access to non-vehicle travel by making it more attractive to walk, bike, and take transit. Mass DOT recently launched a program called Shared Street, Shared Spaces to fund quick build changes to improve sidewalk streets, on-street parking spaces and off-street parking lots in support of public health, safe mobility and renewed commerce. These improvements could be temporary or pilots for potentially permanent changes. Watertown got 85,000, uh, Mast dot pilot grant to do a temporary shared use path from Salt and Salt Park to Church Street behind the library, crossing both Sunny Holy Way and Church Street. This would be a pilot project using mostly paint and temporary barriers to test the changes before creating a more permanent plan for a shared use path through Watertown Square all the way to Mount Auburn Street. It will provide a safer way to walk or bike through this segment of Watertown Square and will inform the future plan for the community path. It was noted that permanent community path connection from Salt and Salt Park to Mount Auburn Street is still in the capital improvement program and the redesign of Watertown Square municipal lot will be part of this project. The proposed reversal of the Wells Ave direction, which was in the parking plan, is not being pursued. Counselor Canelis went on record opposing this and asked to attach your documentation to the report, which can be found in attachment B. Counselor Palumba made a motion seconded by myself to endorse the recommendation as presented by staff, which specifically excludes the reversal of the direction on Wells Ave. That was voted unanimously five to zero. Issue number six, improve wayfinding and signage. This was included in item number four, so no action was taken. Issue number seven, work with owners of private, privately owned off-street parking lots for potential shared parking opportunities. It was noted that this was a subject of a previous committee referral in 2016. Counselor Pichorelli made a motion seconded by councillor Donato to endorse the recommendation as presented by staff, voted unanimously five to zero. Issue number eight, redirect employee parking demand. Key discussion points included. This is not for municipal employee parking. It is for local business employees. The basic premise is to move all-day parking and employee parking permits to further away to underutilized spaces. So more desirable spaces closer to the stores, cause that could then be freed up for customer parking. Counselor Pichorelli made a motion seconded by councillor Donato to endorse the recommendation as presented by staff with the key objective to move employee parking to underutilized locations. That was voted unanimously, uh, by roll call five to zero. Issue number nine, reduce parking demand by enhancing access to non-driving modes. This was included in item number five, so no action was taken. And the final issue, adjust parking and zoning standards to encourage investment in the squares. Key discussion points included. Changing zoning can have a big impact in both businesses and residents. So this would require a more detailed study in the future. There are concerns about pushing commercial parking into residential neighborhoods. If this would, uh, this would, this might create a need for residential parking permits and how this would attract a more diverse range of local businesses. Counselor Pichorelli made a motion seconded by councillor Palumba to take no action on this item at this time as zoning changes require further study. That was, uh, voted unanimously by everyone, five to zero. The meeting adjourned at 7:20 PM following a unanimous roll call vote. The report was prepared by councillor Pichorelli and I thank councillor Pichorelli for the very comprehensive and, uh, very detailed report on two meetings that covered a lot of issues.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to accept the report?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Counselor Gannon.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to commend the, my, my colleagues on the council for such a comprehensive report. I know there were many, many hours of meetings with both staff and the council and this report shows a tremendous amount of work with a good result resulting. I have a couple of questions with regard to implementation. Firstly, with regard to, um, I know there's an $85,000 grant listed to set up a temporary shared use path between Salt and Salt Park and Church Street. Was there any guidance given as to when such a plan would be implemented? Or at least temporarily, um, tried?
Eve, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, it's, it's being constructed as we speak. If you go out behind Town Hall, the pathway along Salt and Salt Park has been widened. They're creating a pathway across the, uh, um, the, uh, former police station ramp. The fire department parking is being reconfigured. Now we'll put in the painting and the bollards to make that connection. So it's, it's, uh, should be completed shortly.
Wonderful, good to hear. And second question, Mr. President. Well, it's actually a comment. And I, I commend the committee for considering, uh, reaching out to owners of private parking lots about in Watertown Square, Village Square and the like. I have personally, uh, when I was city attorney in Seoul, I negotiated leases with, um, other private parking lots, abouting Davis Square and other popular squares. And it turns out to have been a win-win situation for both the owners of the lots and, uh, the city as well as residents and dire need of parking in that location. I think it would be a tremendous benefit for Watertown. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Felton.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, I don't have any questions about the, the report. I, I just want to restate as I did at the meeting on, um, in point number three. Uh, it's, uh, referred to on page two of the, the report that, um, I encourage or am hopeful that perhaps the staff would be willing to pursue some creative, um, options for parking off-peak, particularly in, in Watertown Square. It seems like we started to talk about that in the study and then it kind of fell off. So I support the report and we had a good discussion about that. But I'm hoping that accepting this report and where things are at doesn't mean that we kind of just drop the issue and not think of this maybe, or think of this a little more as a, a living document ongoing, especially given the ongoing, um, pandemic and, and still open questions about the role of the traffic commission in setting rates, policy on, um, time limits.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Can I get a roll call, please?
Counselor Donato.
Yes.
Counselor Felton.
Yes.
Counselor Gannon.
Yes.
Counselor Canelis.
Yes.
Counselor Palumba.
Yes.
Counselor Pichorelli.
Yes.
Counselor Woodland.
Yes.
Counselor Bays.
Yes.
President Sedaris.
Yes, thank you. Can I get a motion that the council endorsed the actions for the parking plan implementation per the recommendations in the Joint Public Works and Economic Development and Planning Committee Report?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Counselor Felton.
Thank you, Mr. President. So it's a little, I'm a little unclear. It, it seems like we've left the question open. I don't know if, if somebody, um, you or Steve McGoon could speak to the, you know, when we look at, I, I'm just wondering, a question on my mind. When we looked at liquor license, some other questions came up where the council voted on fees. Is it, um, and when I've been at traffic commission meetings, whether, uh, you know, sometimes the feeling is it's a policy question when it comes to parking regulations and that's something that council would think, would discuss. Are there, so the way this is written about the traffic commission setting the rate changes or time limits, it seemed like there was a conflict between how we might proceed in the parking plan and being flexible and using that technology versus having the traffic commission having to approve, um, the policies first.
Steve, if you could.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. So I think the conversation, um, maybe I could just kind of describe how it went. You know, there was some conversation about, so, you know, is that just going to be a staff decision to, you know, change the rate of parking meters or, or change the hours? And I think there was not a level of comfort with that. And, and, you know, staff said, no, we, we would certainly bring that to the traffic commission for, for discussion or if need be a policy discussion with the council. And, and we kind of came to the conclusion, that's pretty much the way we amend the TROs now. And if we're going to go through a similar process to amend the TROs, why not just leave it as, as it is in the TROs? So the traffic rules and ordinances, um, you know, is a place that currently has the hours and the rates and will continue to do so with the traffic commission making recommendations to the manager for execution. Obviously, um, if either of those entities felt necessary, they could certainly seek further policy, uh, direction from the council as well.
Okay, and, and one other question, if I may.
Continue.
During the meeting, it was made a clear statement that we are going to have pay by phone technology. It doesn't quite say that in number two, so it just said that we're pursuing to negotiate. It's a little unclear, although Laura Wiener later, uh, confirmed that it wouldn't be an extra cost. So we are, I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure we are including that because it doesn't explicitly say that in this, uh, report.
Yeah, I, through you, Mr. President, uh, I will be unequivocal. We will have pay by phone, uh, and it will not represent additional costs to the town. You know, in terms of procuring the meters or, or those sorts of things. Where we've been negotiating with two different, uh, companies to do that. Also, uh, Chris McClure, our new, uh, IT director or communications or, I'm sorry, I got his title wrong, but in any case, um, he has some, some experience and some great ideas, related to this area as well. So, uh, we've been meeting with him as well to make sure we, we do the best, uh, we can with the technology moving forward. But absolutely, we will have pay by phone.
Thank you.
Yeah. Are there any other questions or comments? Counselor Bays.
Yeah, um, I noticed that it said that there, the parking limit was going to be four hours. First, even for street parking and I thought we had a two-hour time limit total for street parking. And I was wondering if that was okay to have a four-hour limit. It just seems like it's a weird. Like, I mean, I've gotten tickets with a filled meter in other towns because I violated, you know, overstaying the limit. So I was just wondering, can we do that and are people not going to get ticketed?
Eve.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the, yeah, recommendation of the consultant was to not have limits and really manage how, how long people park in spots based on how much you, you charge for it. And so, uh, while we, I think are moving forward with that recommendation in the municipal lots, the concern was some of the on-street parking that, uh, employees might park there. So we did keep the four-hour maximum. So does that conflict with the two-hour maximum on-street parking elsewhere? No, I, I think that's only in, at a meter where you're, uh, paying for parking as opposed to on-street parking in general where there is no meter and, and that, that is still limited to hours.
Are there any other questions? Caroline?
No, I just said, thank you. I, I, I thought, although I do, wait, I do, I thought that any street in Watertown was limited to two-hour parking.
That, that, that's true, but that's, that's not a limitation for a meter. So you could, if you're paying for that parking space, uh, that can exceed the two-hour limitation.
Okay, thanks.
Are there any other questions or comments? I do also appreciate the fact that we're doing pay by phone because that's the technology that's there. And the beginning of one of the meetings, I think Laura said that they weren't considering that and I was a little concerned, but I'm glad to hear that we are still pursuing that because there's no reason to be making these changes without that capability. Can I get a roll call, please? Oh, Counselor Felton, one more time.
Sorry, one, one more thing I forgot to ask. It's probably too soon, but I didn't know if Mr. Goon, McGoon might have any update or something to share. We were all kind of excited about better wayfinding and, um, he said there were floating ideas about, uh, designs and how that might be accomplished.
Steve.
Yes, through you, Mr. President. So, uh, yeah, we had a meeting this week with, uh, uh, you know, advisory committee and the designer to looking, looking at some options. We also talked with councillor Woodland in terms of, uh, scheduling that with the, um, subcommittee to present some of those options and start to get some public comment and feedback in terms of, uh, of the design for those signs. So yes, very much moving forward.
Thank you.
Okay, now can we get a roll call, please?
Counselor Felton.
Yes.
Counselor Gannon.
Yes.
Counselor Canelis.
Yes.
Counselor Palumba.
Yes.
Counselor Pichorelli.
Yes.
Counselor Woodland.
Yes.
Counselor Bays.
Yes.
Counselor Donato.
Yes.
President Sedaris.
Yes, thank you. The next item on the agenda is new business. Any new business to come before the council? We move on to communications from the town manager, Mr. Manager.
Well, yeah, thank you, well, Mr. President, uh, members of the council. I, I just wanted to, uh, speak on one item tonight and that's the, uh, the state election a week from today. And, uh, just wanna, uh, two parts of the, uh, my comments tonight. The first one would be talking about which would put it, would put in the COVID-19 updates, weekly updates. There are three ways to cash a ballot, uh, for the November 3rd state election. The first one is the deadline to request a mail-in ballot, uh, is tomorrow, October 28 at 5:00 PM. You can then mail your ballot back in a postage paid envelope or return your ballot anytime 24/7 at the exterior official ballot drop box, drop, drop-off box located on Salt and Salt Park of Town Hall up to 8:00 PM on Tuesday, November 3, which is a week from today. So that's the first way, uh, you can, uh, cash your ballot. The second one is, uh, and the president alluded to, President Sedaris alluded to this, is early voting, which is going and going, continuing through, uh, this Friday, October 30. So there are three more sessions, which are tomorrow, Thursday and Friday, 8:30 to 5:00 PM. And then the last way to, uh, vote is in person on election day and you can vote at your regular election, uh, polling location on Tuesday, November 3rd from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. I did want to follow up on the council president Sedaris remarks under the president's report and, uh, kind of compliment, uh, Mr. Flynn, uh, and his staff and also thank the council for the additional resources tonight. But, uh, I did receive a, uh, a lady mail from Mr. Flynn today that as of today, it's been 13,255 vote by mail or absentee ballot applications have been processed and mailed. And getting back to what the president alluded to, uh, of those, uh, applications that have been processed, what's been returned, uh, by mail has been 7,474 ballots and in-person ballots returned 3,203 ballots. That total is $10,677. Seven, seven dollars, uh, ten, 10,670, uh, six, 77 ballots, which represents 42% of the total number of registered voters eligible to participate in the election next Tuesday. Uh, so certainly a shout out to, uh, all of the Watertown voters. And then lastly, today, the advanced removal of the early voting ballots from envelopes and advanced depositing of early voted ballots in. today with three precincts being completed. So again, that's a kind of a very positive report. And again, I want to thank Mr. Flynn and his staff and all the additional staff who've been utilized for a very, very busy state election, which is a week from tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Request for information, any requests for information? Counsel Feltonner.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. I'm wondering what H R policies we might be under consideration to allow for need flexibility for town employees, especially this pandemic is not going away. And, you know, maybe even modernizing town hall policies. But I was just curious what the administration might be considering when it comes to the workplace.
Thank you. Any other requests for information? Seeing none announcements, any announcements? Counsel again, and then Counsel Petrelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just following up with the town manager is very substantive detailing of the election procedures. And I I want to also follow up the town managers. Thanks to all the hard work that has been going on, has been conducted by town employees, volunteers, and getting us to this remarkable forty plus percent participation of eligible voters in Watertown to date. And that's one week before the election. So also want to thank in advance the poll workers who will be coming out, all the staff support for them. I know a lot of town employees were redeployed during the primary. I'm sure they will be out again this coming Tuesday. But most far, as a election lawyer attorney, I did ask a lot of questions of the town clerk's office. I want to say that they have been nothing but forthcoming and very informative and really above the curve. And I I think that's a credit to Watertown and I I think it's great to acknowledge. Thank you.
Counsel Feltonner, you had announcements and then, I'm sorry, Counsel Petrelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to remind the council that we're going to have our first meeting for budget priority guidelines on November second. And I need your input no later than tomorrow, Wednesday, October twenty eighth at five P M. So we can put all the comments together in preparation of the meeting on Monday. Thank you.
Counsel Feltonner, do you have an announcement? I'm sorry. No. Any other announcements? I just want to announce again, and I'll continue to, we're going to try to get on the schedule here. The Watertown Charter Review Committee is going to be meeting again on November seventeenth at six P M. To continue discussions about the Watertown Town Charter. And thanks to the council for allowing the funding tonight to have a consultant who's going to be helping us out in this endeavor. Public forum, any members of the public wish to be heard at this time? We're down to three people.
I do have no emails.
You have no emails? Okay. I don't see any hands. Can I get a motion to adjourn, please? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Ganon?
Yes.
Counsel Canelis?
Yes.
Counsel Palumba?
Yes.
Counsel Petrelli?
Yes.
Counsel Woodland?
Yes.
Counsel Bays?
Yes.
Counsel Donato?
Yes.
Counsel Feltonner?
Yes.
President Sideris?
Yes, thank you. Good night, everyone. Attorney Rich, thanks for all your help tonight. Night, everyone.